It's the 16th day of September 2025 at 12:00 PM and I call this meeting to order. Roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Balladiz?
Here.
Councilmember Predmore?
Here.
Councilmember Fisher?
Here.
Mayor Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember DeFrenzis?
Here.
Here.
Mayor, you have form.
Thank you, Georgina. Invitation, please, let's stand for that. Mike, do you mind?
I don't. You bow your heads. Lord, we thank you again for this day. We thank you for an opportunity to be here in Bertram today. Lord, I pray that you will give the council and everybody presenting to the council and who's here for business to have wisdom and patience and time they are presented to the council. And we thank you for the opportunity to have a government that allows us to do this, Lord. We look around our nation right now and we can definitely see that we're hurting and we're divided, Lord, and nothing, you're the only helper solution for this, Lord. So we pray that you work in the hearts of those who follow you to heal this nation moving forward. We pray that you will be with our first responders out there as they're keeping us safe, that you will keep them safe. And again, thank you for the freedoms that we have for living in the United States of America, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Now, the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Community input? Ray Caldwell.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. You have three minutes to...
Not a problem, I'll keep it short.
Go ahead, Georgina.
Yeah, I want to just speak about a growing situation that we're having with the parking for our ball field here. And it's really come to a head just this past weekend. There was a huge influx of traffic on there. I live on Western Avenue, so I get to see it, you know, firsthand every weekend when it comes. But the parking has gotten quite out of hand. What's happening now is we've got RVs, travel trailers that's coming in on the weekends. They're arriving on Friday night. They're setting up. They're running generators and stuff. I did not think that there was to be, you know, overnight stays there. And so they take up a lot of the parking area that is supposedly designated for the people that come to see the children play. So what happens then is it pushes them out onto Western Avenue and they're parking all up and down the street. Of course, there are people from out of town, so they're not quite sure of directions. I don't know what their GPS is showing them, but it brings them down Western Avenue in a lot of cases. And so they're turning down our driveways. I've had my property damaged because of this with these big trucks that they drive backing onto my landscape, leaving marks on my driveway. We've got children that play there on the street. We've probably had five new births this year just on that street alone. So something needs to happen with safety issues, with all this influx of traffic, damages to our property, excuse me. And it's just a huge inconvenience. It's hard to come home and relax, you know, in your home, you know, when you have all this activity that's going on down our street. So I ask that there could be some consideration for that. I know there's also a 25 mile per hour sign that has been placed on the street. It doesn't really help that much. And again, when I said that it just kind of came to a head this week, I personally have called the police department and the sheriff's department five times on Sunday, and that was just me. I know they had quite a few calls coming out because not only are they just parking up and down the street on both sides, but they're parking in front of our fire hydrant, which is a huge safety issue. And I know that's the five calls that I called, and it happens to be right in front of my home. And so for a safety issue, that's huge. I know they did write some violations and citations on that. The police officers responded very well. I really appreciate them coming out and spending their time, and I'm sure they got better things to do, you know, than take these kind of calls, you know, for that. So I'm asking for some help on the situation here. If we can put maybe some better signage that says resident parking only on that street, or we provide another avenue for the flow of the traffic, you know, to flow through there so that not everything is just dumped onto Western Avenue.
Thank you.
Mike, I got something on that. So I spoke to the league president this weekend, and they are aware of the RV issue. They are going to take care of that. There is no overnight parking, so that's going to be addressed and then enforced by our police department. I understand Officer McCoy was there several times. He wrote several citations for the fire hydrant.
I saw him. Thank you.
So it's already being addressed, but we will follow up with it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Otis?
Hi. Unaccustomed as I am to public speaking, I'll try to do my best. See, on the agenda, a resolution to authorize the creation of a public improvement district. And then the next item is to create a professional services agreement with somebody to develop that. Mike, I don't have any idea what a public improvement district is. And I looked it up in the city code, and apparently, according to the code, there should be a feasibility study and a public hearing. So have we done that about this public improvement district?
And we have bond counsel here as well, but so yes, the public improvement district actually is to be created today, and so we're actually have a public hearing today to have it done. And you're saying the city code, you're talking about the local government code, chapter 372?
That is correct, eight and nine.
And so that's where it's established. And so what we're going to have to do is, after it's created, we move forward and we do what's called an assessment plan. We call it an SAP. And that's what establishes what's the assessments that's placed on the property. And I understand that the PID is a defined district. It's a piece of property. And in all cases, it has to be the property owners who either request or are part of the process. And in this case, the property owner, which we'll get to talk about here in a little bit, did request the creation of this public improvement district. And so that's what we're doing it on, that property. And the assessments for the PID are only going to be on the properties that are inside of that district. So it's not going to impact the taxes for anybody else outside of that district. So all the expenses from that are going to be borne specifically within that district to create the infrastructure to be able to develop it.
Okay. And for me, just somehow the motion to create it is a public hearing?
No, we published notice and...
We did.
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I looked on the website and I couldn't find it, so that's just me. I just wonder, what the heck is this, guys?
That's what it is. It's a development mechanism that, and I'm actually a fan of public improvement districts because it keeps all of the assessments within that district. And so it doesn't impact the homeowners outside or the residents.
Well, I definitely trust you because you're a lawyer.
That's probably why you shouldn't trust me.
No, you've done pretty well for us.
Oh, thank you.
All right. That was my question. And it would be great if it could be explained what it actually is and, you know, some of the details about it.
Otis, we had a full PowerPoint presentation last meeting that was on the agenda.
Well, naturally, I'm one of those people who never shows up for meetings when they're important.
And I'm glad you all took off today to be here. I appreciate that. But we had a full presentation by the attorney. It's been on the last two agendas. So it's been explained in detail. And a PID where I appreciate it is the people buying those homes know they're buying a home inside that PID, so they have the choice whether they want to be a part of that or not. And it affects no one else sitting here but the people that buy those houses.
And you're seeing this as of value to Bertram?
I'm seeing it as not a negative effect for any other citizen, and it helps develop the infrastructure without us having to pay for it.
Cool. All right. Thank you. Thank you for the time. Thank you for being here, Michael.
Thank you. Consent agenda items, 1.1, August 12, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion. We pass the regular meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Lane and a second by James. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. Department report, 2.1, Police Department Monthly Activity Report. Chief Brantley, if you would, please.
Good afternoon. Last year, we had, or last year, last month, we had a bit of slowdown. We had a total of 313 calls versus 358 the month before that. Had several arrests arise, most of which were from driving offenses. I think a total of arrest fives, five arrests, down for last month. We had a total of 160 traffic violations resulting in 100 warnings, 55 citations, and five arrests. As far as code compliance, we had four code issues. Everything is being, notice has been given, and most of them have been resolved. And there's one or two that we're waiting on for them to get back to us. As far as our animal control stuff, we impounded zero dogs. We had several animal calls for service, but we impounded zero dogs, which meant we transported zero to the Hill Country Humane Society. So we still have 27 beds left for the remainder of this budget.
Thank you, Chief Brantley.
Yes, sir.
2.2 Municipal Court Report and Monthly Activity. That would be Connie Fliss. But Georgina, can you please read that?
Yes. Total payments received for the month of August 2025, $12,361.80. Total new cases, 80. 65 cases disposed of, seven new warrants, 20 warrants closed. There was one show cause hearing and three pre-trials in the month of August 2025.
Thank you. 2.3 Development Report and Monthly Activity. That would be Cindy Sanchez. But Georgina, if you could read that one too, that would be great.
Sir, for the Development Services Department, there was a total of 160 various inspections performed by Bureau Veritas, and there were 15 various permits issued with a valuation of $1,566,335.
Okay. Thank you. 2.3.1 Utility Engineering Group.
Good afternoon.
That's not Gary.
It's not Gary. David Kneifer with Utility Engineering Group, filling in for Gary this afternoon. I think you'll have his progress report in your packet. I do have a few updates if you have a few minutes. On Grande Estates, the plat was signed by Gary yesterday and has been routed for signatures. On the 12 and 16 inch transmission main and elevated storage tank, notices were sent out to property owners last week. They were mailed out last week. Staking on that project should begin next week by the contractor. Going down to List Station D in the force main, we're coordinating with city staff and the pump supplier right now to try to see if we can use some existing pumps that the city has. So we're working through that right now. But that project is wrapping up as far as the design. The Lewis Park easement was signed on here. It had that, you know, it's pending signature. So that's complete. On the last project, State Highway 29, water and sewer updates. The ruler's permit was submitted to TechSta end of last month. And then, so on that project, we're working with city staff to determine if we can build that using in-house crews or not. So bidding and advertisement will be pending that decision. But if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Counsel? No, thank you.
Thank you.
2.4 Utility Department Report and Monthly Activity. Adam Lambert.
We had only one water leak this past month. We pumped 15.8 million gallons of water. We did install two new pumps at the list station sites. That was C and B. Guys completed 123 work orders, put out roughly six tons of asphalt. At the park, they did install the water, wastewater, and electrical services for the new restroom. That is just about wrapped up. We had some change orders, so that's why it's kind of behind schedule. Waiting for the awning to be done and some locks on our part. We did have two new guys start yesterday. Very happy to have them here. We needed the help. We completed our lead and copper samples. Every three years, we passed all 20 of those.
All right, thank you, Adam. 2.5 Current Financial Status of the City. Georgina Hernandez.
So for the month of August 2025, total operating accounts, including any savings in market accounts that we have, $3,010,694.12. And the enterprise or utility fund accounts, $24,445,158.99. Total of $27,455,863.11.
Good. Thank you. Public notice. Public hearing concerning, this is 3.1, concerning the creation of the Village Public Improvement District pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code. Now, this is a public hearing. This is a public notice, so all citizens have the opportunity to speak and to be heard regards to the proposed project. So if you want to speak at any time during the public notice, now is the time to do it. So we're talking about 3.1.
Mayor, did you want the bond counsel to make his presentation now, or do you want to do it during the agenda item?
Is it quick or?
That's fine. That's totally fine. I just wanted to offer it just in case.
All right. Thank you.
Can I add a similar thing? Could we just give a quick rundown of what it is for those of us who did not come to the meeting that John told me about that I...
Of the, of this particular pit? I don't know what that says about your bloodlines, but... Do you want to hear about this particular pit or just more about?
Well, it's what you think is relevant, just so that anybody who wasn't at the meeting would get a picture of what we're talking about.
Can you give us a quick?
Does that make sense? If it doesn't make sense, you...
No, I mean, that makes sense. And, yeah, it was because you came to the front. That's why I actually asked if we wanted to do it now. Otherwise, I would have waited. Kind of got an idea. Okay, here we go. And this is our bond counsel, Chris, and last name's Guevara, but we're not related, that we know of.
Not that we know of.
They dress the same, too. I mean, the tie, everything.
Sure, I'll try to speak into the mic as much as possible. So my name is Chris Guevara. I'm with the firm Norton Rose Fulbright. We serve as bond counsel to the city. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, just in general, a public improvement district. You guys explained it very well, I thought, before the meeting during the public comment period. Public improvement district is a defined area district created by a city either within its corporate limits or its extraterritorial jurisdiction whereby a city can levy assessments within that defined area to pay for improvements, which confer a special benefit on the property within the district. The assessments are paid by property owners within the district. So that's either, right now, if assessments were levied today, that would be the developer who owns all the land, so he would be the assessment payer. In the future, the assessments run with the land, so homeowners would be the ones paying the assessments. And as was mentioned previously, homeowners are provided with, legally, they have to be provided with a notice whenever they close on the home, which tells them that this is the amount of the assessment. An assessment has been levied. This is the name of the district. You can go to the city to get all the information regarding the assessment. If that notice is not provided, then they can void the sale. So it's pretty incentivized to provide that notice to prospective homeowners. In general, you can only levy assessments within property within that district. And very specifically, you can only levy it on land that is included in the notice that is published in the newspaper. So there is a map. Yeah, sure, sure. Okay. Yeah, now I could, sure, sure, sure. That map is included in, was included in the notice. So the name of the district is the Village Public Improvement District. It's wholly owned by the PID petitioner, just a developer. It's within the city's corporate limits. It's an area of roughly 26 acres. The types of improvements that are contemplated in the petition and in the creation resolution were parks, streets, water, wastewater, signage, entry monumentation, and projects similar to those. The total estimated cost of the authorized improvements was $5 million. And in general, the property is located south of Vaughn Lane and east of Northeast Street. And, you know, I think that, I think that a good map of the district was included in the notice, and it should be attached behind the creation resolution. So those boundaries set out the boundaries of the PID, and you can't assess land that's not included in those boundaries that are depicted. So only those, either people who own land there now or own land there in the future would be responsible for assessments. Pids are completely self-funding, so all the costs of the city's consultants and the costs of many bonds issued to finance the improvements are paid through the assessments. So it's a net neutral to the city. And then also, I would just mention, behind the creation resolution that is being passed today, we're including a dissolution agreement, which provides that if assessments aren't levied within three years of the creation of the district, then the city can dissolve the PID. So it's just, it's not, the land isn't just sitting there entitled if there's no development. I think that's all I have. If there's any questions.
Y'all have any questions? Otis, you getting questions?
I wanted to say thank you.
You're welcome. So anybody else, counsel, having questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's no cost to the city or no cost to anybody outside that pit? It's not costing anybody else?
But the benefit to the city is developing itself.
In the payment of infrastructure that the city's not having to foot the bill for.
So it's 1223, and I close 3.1. 3.2 Public Hearing on the Proposed Economic Development Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Budget. Motion. Oh, yeah. What I was thinking.
Yeah, ready to go.
Anybody? 1224, and we close 3.2. 3.3 Public Hearing on the Proposed City of Bertram Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Budgets.
Seems to be general agreement, so it's okay.
And it's 1225, and I close 3.3.
For the record, just make sure that when you start the public hearing, you give the time to...
Okay.
...the last one, just for the record.
All right. 1225 PM. 3.4 Public Hearing on the Proposed Tax Rate Increase. A tax rate of 0.417, is that what it is?
Oh, no, it's the public notice is for...
Okay, for the notice, it's 4550 per 100 valuation. Has been proposed by the governing body. All right, it's 1225, and I close 3.4. Action Items, 4.1 Discuss and Consider Resolution 605-091625, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bertram, Texas, authorizing the creation of the Village Public Improvements District, authorizing a dissolution agreement resolving other matters incident and related thereto, and providing an effective date. Would you want to get back up and talk again?
So I kind of said everything. I kind of said a lot of what I wanted to say. You know, the resolution before you creates the public improvement district. It, you know, it's 26 acres within the corporate limits of the city, and it's, you know, for the improvements I was talking about earlier, streets and roads, water, drainage, the sorts of improvements. The total cost is at $5 million in the creation resolution. And then, as I said earlier, it authorizes a dissolution agreement between the city and the developer, providing that if assessments aren't levied within three years of today, if it's created today, then the city can dissolve the district. So the land isn't just entitled without any way to dissolve it. Well, I think, I believe we also have members of the development team here if there's any questions concerning the project. But I can answer any questions concerning creation of the PID or Pids in general.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 605-091625 in the creation of the PID, so mentioned.
We got a motion by James and a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. Thank you. 4.2 Discuss and Consider Resolution 606-091625, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bertram, Texas, approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the city and the developer of the Village Public Improvement District and resolving other matters related thereto.
So this resolution is a resolution authorizing a professional services agreement. What that is, is an agreement between the city and the developer whereby the developer provides a deposit to pay for the cost of the city's consultants, being like myself, my firm, and the city attorney, the PID administrator, the financial advisor, all of those folks. It would pay for their costs via that developer deposit until we get to the point of assessment levy, at which point the PID would become self-funding. I believe we have the developer deposit set at $40,000. No, those funds are deposited with the city and kept by the city.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion to accept Resolution 606-091625, authorizing the execution of a professional service agreement.
Got a motion by Anthony and a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. 4.3 Discuss and Consider Appointment of Administration and Administrator for the Village Public Improvement District. Public Improvement District.
So, this item is on there, as Chris talked about, we do need an administrator. So, Gina said she did not want to do it. She said she's already floodplain manager, so she doesn't want to add that to her title. So, there's a couple firms around here that I'm comfortable with, and I've worked with Chris's firm on a couple. So, basically, what we've had with a couple, so I'm asking the council just to have to be able to reach out to a couple to get some proposed, a couple different firms and bring a proposal back, proposals hopefully back to the council.
And to be clear, I was never asked, nor was it proposed.
Are you volunteering? No?
Oh, yeah, I've used UniCap. They're more in the Dallas area, but y'all use UniCap?
Mostly, we use P3.
P3, yeah.
All qualified groups to do it. Ultimately, it's the city's decision, but I mean.
I mean, if the developer's team, I can reach out to UniCap and get a proposal from them.
No, we need to get it voted on today.
Oh, you want to go ahead and vote it on today? Okay.
Let the staff do that.
Well, no, they want to get somebody appointed today because they're itching to start construction, so they want to get moving.
Really? That's great, huh?
So, Chris, I don't, I don't have a problem. I think he's saying P3 is fine.
UniCap, you know? No, not really. I mean, I'm somewhat familiar, but mostly in central Texas, people use UniCap.
I've used UniCap, but it's up in the Dallas area. That's fine, though.
They are, but we work with all of them all over the state. I mean, we email everything anyway.
I mean, I mean, y'all are comfortable because, I mean, that's very important to y'all. I don't have a problem.
So, are you all in a position to hire an administrator today?
I mean, we would, we'd have to reach out to him and get a contract from him and everything.
A list for proposals.
Right, right. But they could be appointed today, pending, obviously, approval of a lot of staff. That's the, that's the recommendation we'd ask the council to go forward.
Like, if y'all are comfortable with P3.
And they're already aware of this project, so.
UniCap is?
No, no, P3 is.
Oh, P3.
P3's already aware of this project, so we happy if y'all want to go ahead and vote P3. We can hit that, we can hit that ground running pretty quick.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we appoint P3 to become the administrator of the PIT.
I'll second.
Got a motion by James and a second by Anthony. All in favor, raise your right hand. And that motion passes. 4.4, discuss and consider Economic Development Corporation fiscal year 25-26 budget.
I make a motion that we approve the EDC-FY 25-26 budget.
I'll second. Got a motion by James and a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Done.
Was who was it?
I knew what you meant.
Motion by John and a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand. 4.5, discuss and consider employee benefits, annual renewal rates, and renewing of the Baylor Scott &amp; White health benefits of equitable on life, AD&amp;D, and dental and vision. Do we have somebody here today for that?
I don't think Javier Reyes normally gives this presentation, but because we're remaining with the same provider that we currently have, our current provider is Baylor Scott &amp; White. We did reach out to the Blue Crosses, the Aetna's, the Cigna, all of those providers. Because we're such a small group, the rates came in higher for the same level of benefits. The increase with Baylor Scott &amp; White is an increase of 1.9%, which they couldn't beat. No one could beat that, that increase. So, in order to stay within the city's current budget, in the budget that was proposed to you all, the recommendation is going to be to stay with Baylor Scott &amp; White, and for health, and then equitable for life, accidental death and dismemberment, vision, and dental coverages, which they, there wasn't an increase on those. So, equitable rates stayed the same.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, and we stay with equitable vision and Baylor Scott &amp; White for health.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Anthony and a second by Lane. All in favor, raise your right hand. 4.6, discuss and consider ordinance number 9-091625, an ordinance making appropriations and funds for the support of the City of Bertram for the fiscal year beginning in October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026, appropriating money and adopting the annual budget of the City of Bertram for the 2025-2026 fiscal year, providing for a severability clause, and providing for an effective date.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 9-091625, approving the budget for the fiscal year.
Got a motion by James and a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand. 4.7, discuss and consider ratification of the property tax increase in the budget.
I'll make a motion that we approve the property tax rate of .4417 for the City of Bertram. Second.
Got a motion by John and a second by Lane. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. 4.8, discuss and consider ordinance number 14-091625, an ordinance levying the adveraler tax for the use and support of the municipal government of the City of Bertram for the 2025-2026 fiscal year, appropriating the funds and support, the general fund providing when taxes shall become due and when the same shall become delinquent, if not paid, providing for imposition of a tax lien, and providing for a severability clause, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, I will need them to issue a vote individually on this one.
Do I vote on this one, too?
Just individually.
Okay. So, you have to say it individually.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 14-091625. That is as it is written.
Written has .41.
It doesn't mention the tax rate in there, though.
Yeah, it does.
It does, in the actual resolution, it does.
Yeah. 1.01.
All right, let me amend my motion. Make a motion that we approve ordinance number 14091625, ordinance levying adveraler taxes for use and support at the rate of .4417. That's my motion.
Second.
Got a motion by John and a second by Randall. So, now we need to.
I thought we were voting individually. Well, yeah, we have that motion and a second before we can vote.
We just did. Now, we must vote on it individually.
John?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Randall Fisher?
Yes.
Anthony DeFrances?
Yes.
Lane Ship?
Yes.
That motion passes. 4.9, discuss and consider ordinance number 09-091625B, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bertram amending the fiscal year 2024-2025 official budget, adopted by ordinance number 09-092424, providing a cumulative clause, providing for a severability clause, and providing for an effective date.
So, throughout the year, the City Council has made motions to do expenditures that were not falling in within budget. This is the time of year that we do budget amendments that reflect those actions that were taken by council throughout the year. The attached spreadsheet shows the changes that were made, and where those incomes came in, like we spent more on credit card fees because the development services department were taking credit cards. So, obviously, we got more in fees, we spent more in expenses as far as from the credit card companies. Auto expenses, there was a few changes in the police department, spent, went over budget in some automobile expenses. And I think those were it for that, for that one. And the utility, that's where the big changes were, just because there was so much expenditures that were coming out of engineering, and the new loan that came in for the station that wasn't in the budget. So, it's probably four in there.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 09091625B. Is that an A? B.
Got a motion by John and a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes.
My glasses.
4.10, discuss and consider ordinance number 207-091625, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bertram amending the code of ordinances by amending Chapter 1, Article 1.03, City Council by amending Section 1.03.031, date and time of regular meeting, setting the time of the regular meeting to 12:00 PM on the second Tuesday of the month, and 6:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of the month, amending Section 1.03.035, agenda, setting for the date. Items must be presented to be placed on the agenda to seven calendar days before posting the agenda and providing for an repeal of the ordinance in the conflict where within, and providing an effective date.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 207-091625.
I will second.
Got a motion by James and a second by Anthony.
Before we vote on it, the only question I would have is the way that it drafted, which it normally does, put an effective date as of today. However, we moved the September meeting to the third Tuesday to fit the budget deadlines that are in the tax and local government codes, so that means it would be next week from today. So, do we want this to go effective October 1 instead of effective today, or do we want to have a meeting?
October 1. October. I'll amend my motion to effective date October 1.
Okay.
All in favor, all in favor, raise your right hand.
If you had to second, here's a.
Yeah, we need to second.
Okay.
Second was Randall.
Okay.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. He sustained.
No.
No, Lane.
I did.
Lane sustained.
Abstained.
Abstained.
I sustained.
He's abstained.
He's abstained.
4.11, discuss and consider preliminary plat subdivision application for Hopewell Village.
Mayor and Council, David Knapper with Utility Engineering Group again. We've completed our review of the preliminary plat and recommend approval.
Yes. Yeah, I get, what's that?
They recommend approval.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the plat subdivision application.
I'll second.
Got a motion by James and a second by Anthony. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes.
All right, thank you.
4.12, discuss and consider request from Oatmeal Festival Committee of up to $10,000 on hotel motel tax funds.
So, Oatmeal Festival Committee has requested tax funds for this year's Oatmeal Festival to be used towards advertising expenses. Correct me if I'm wrong, John, Valdez.
You are correct.
Same as last year, same amount as last year. They submit receipts, and then we break a check if they're all for advertising out of the hotel motel tax account.
John, you have anything else you want to say about that?
No, this is just, this is the biggest festival the town puts on, so it brings a lot of people to town, so the hot funds are used for advertisement.
I make a motion, we accept the Oatmeal Festival reimbursement of up to $10,000.
Second.
We got a motion by Anthony and a second by Lane. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. 4.13, discuss and consider requests from Bertram Chamber of Commerce of up to 4,000 hotel motel tax funds for Bertram Country Christmas. Betty, do you want to?
Yeah, so Betty Prudmore, manager of Bertram Chamber of Commerce, that is our request for promotional funds for the Country Christmas Festival.
Okay.
Which is not quite as big as the Oatmeal Festival.
The second one.
So, it's getting there. It's nice.
Yeah, we're getting there, so that's what that is.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion, we accept a request for reimbursement of the $4,000 for the Bertram Country Christmas.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Anthony and a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. 4.14, discuss and consider Friends of Bertram Library to place book bar inbox at Panther Park. Betty, you want to speak on that also?
Sure, Gina, how do you stand out? Yep.
I was wondering what it was going to look like.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, if you look at your sheet, the top right-hand corner is the unit we've actually purchased for, for use, and the bottom left-hand corner, to the right of that picture, the trees closest to the bench, is where we would like to get permission to put it. And then, the pedestal is an option that we have for, you know, the stand for the, the unit to go on, so that we were, first off, wanting permission to put it there, and secondly, we wanted your input on what kind of foundation you would like for the box. That's a potential one there, the platform stand would allow children to be able to kind of climb up and open the doors, or if you prefer that we do something with concrete or, or something like that, we could as well. But this seemed like an appropriate one and not too terribly expensive for us to do. So, we'd like your permission to be able to put it there. We would supply the books at all times for it, and these books would be available to our community at no cost, adult books and, and children's books, so anyone could go over to the park and pick up a book, so.
At any time, correct?
At any time, it won't be locked, it'll be open at all times.
If we put that stand, something similar to the one you have there, how would we anchor that in? Have you thought about it?
Well, we didn't proceed too far with it until we asked y'all what you thought about how we put it in, but I happen to know someone who might be able to figure out how to anchor it in there.
I don't know, he's kind of busy.
Yeah, he's a little busy, but I'm sure we can figure that out easy. We just didn't want to proceed with ordering any kind of base for it until we got your preference for the park, so.
That was my question about how it's going to be secured through the ground, so.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It doesn't walk off.
You know, the librarian's husband did the poles for the story walk, and so I'm sure we could do it similar to whatever he did for those, because those are, are very secure in the ground, all the way around the path. So, I'm sure that we could probably get him to, to put it in for us and secure it in a similar fashion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would be nice. You just have to get with you, Adam, huh? Because we've got water and electricity running underground right there.
I haven't seen a location.
I haven't seen the location. We'll mark it out, we'll make it work.
Okay. Any problems with that? Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the Friends of the Bertram Library's request to place a book borrowing box at Panther Park.
I'll second.
Got a motion by John and a second by Anthony. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. 4.15 Discuss and consider request for, from Cynthia Anderson to close the street on Gabriel Street from Vaughn Street to Cedar Street, an intersection of Gabriel Street to South Street and alleyway to Gabriel by Park of the, Gabriel by Park for the Halloween on Vaughn event, October 31st, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. This is what we do. I do this every year.
I make a motion that we approve the request to close down Vaughn Street on October 31st for the Halloween event.
Got a motion by James and a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Just to clarify, that's Gabriel Street, not Vaughn Street, correct? Gabriel.
They want to close, Vaughn Street's already closed.
Right, but Gabriel.
Gabriel.
Then Gabriel.
And they want to close the alleyways.
Correct. You said Vaughn, I just want to make sure we're good.
4.16 Discuss and consider mile after mile proposal for the impact vacuum truck with Kenlok Equipment and Supply Incorporated. This is something we've been trying to get for...
So, yeah, this is in the proposed budget for fiscal year 2526 in services, so the, the back truck itself is a, is a major expenditure for the city we can't afford to buy outright, $414,000 for this back truck. Can you explain what a back truck does, Adam?
So it's, it is hydro excavation, so we go out there and dig around utilities or something like that, not damage them. We'd also build clean lift stations with the vacuum part of it. We have a jet machine on the front, which to jet sewer lines, man, and stuff like that, which we don't currently have that capability, so it's been needed. We've been using D.V. Flores for the pumping out the lift stations, and it's very costly, so.
So the mile-by-mile program allows the maintenance to be kept with them, so they'll service the vehicle for the duration of the contract, aside from like tires and things like that, but they'll service the vehicle if it breaks down or whatever, as well as there is a buyout at five years or we can just turn it back over. Sort of like a lease-to-purchase program that's offered.
We've needed this thing for years, haven't we?
And it is in the current fiscal year budget to earmark for this dollar amount for the yearly payment, the annual payment. Annual payment, 74?
For five years?
And then there's a balloon payment.
At the bottom.
Your six, like 100 and something.
Make a motion that we approve 4.16 and for the mile-and-mile proposal of the vacuum truck.
I'll second. Got a motion by James and a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. Congratulations, Adam.
Thank you.
4.17 Discuss and consider Animal Shelter Adoption Center Agreement with Hill Country Humane Society for the fiscal year 2526.
So this came in after the last meeting. They are doing an increase of $2,000. We have been paying, this fiscal year, we pay $10,000 annually for them to take in strays, cats and dogs. We are increasing that amount just because their expenses are going up to an additional $2,000, so the price for next fiscal year will be $12,000. That was the only change I saw in the, in the agreement.
Have we seen a natural increase around here of animals?
Yes, sir, we're, we're getting more animal calls. We're, lately, we've been able to deal with them a little better than, than taking them, but I talked to Peyton Corley today at the Humane Society, and they're, they just had a new facility built and they're already behind the eight ball again.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I make a motion, we accept the Animal Shelter Adoption Center Agreement increase for fiscal year 2526.
We got a motion by Anthony, second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. 4.18 Discuss and consider appointment or reappointment to CAPCOG General Assembly Representative for City of Bertram.
I make a motion that we reappoint Georgina Hernandez to CAPCOG General Assembly Representative for the City of Bertram.
I second.
That Francis wanted to do it.
We have a motion and a second on the floor already.
Motion by John and a second by Anthony. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes.
I ain't that dumb.
4.19 Discuss and consider Officer Devin Viner's appeal or disciplinary action resulting in the motion taken by Chief Brantley. 4.20 Discuss and consider cities permitted water supply and expansion of water and sewer system and supply options. City Council of the City of Bertram reserves the right to adjourn into an executive session at any time during the course of this meeting to discuss any matters listed on the agenda.
Mayor, real quickly, so for the first item, at least part of it, will be under 551071, which is consultation with attorney, and I saw Mr. Attorney. There you go, okay, there you go right there. And they've requested in writing that it be in closed session. Now, I just want to make sure it's on the record, is that still the request?
Yes.
Okay, so it'll be, it'll be in closed session and we'll discuss that when we get back in there. With regard to 4.20, there is a minor update on there, because sometimes we just say there's nothing, but there is a minor update on that one, and so we'll have a little bit of time on that. That will be under, under 551071, consultation with attorney, and if I didn't say it, the personnel is 551074, and so the 4.19 will be under both, 74 and 071.
All right. 12:57, and this meeting is adjourned into session.
Yeah, I was on CAPCOG when I was at Cedar Park. So, yeah, emergency services, things along that time, and it's for the cog, the cap, capital area cog. There's a bunch of counties, it's like Vernon, Williamson, Hayes, Travis. It's typically, I did it when I was on City Council at Cedar Park, so. Uh, well, I mean, we can, we can bring it back up after the closed session. What's the one to Monday? What's the order?
The next one is?
Yeah, it is Wednesday.
Yes, ma'am.
Start tomorrow. But you don't have to...
License to... No, you have to have a license.
Well, that's true, I was with Cedar Park, so that's...
So I thought I might ask the...
Most of the smaller taxing services don't send any...
All right, I'll see.
You know, it's free mail and you get to, you know,...